Okay, this meeting is called back to order at 6:41 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love that. Yeah. Okay, can I please have a motion in a second that the agenda of November 5th, 2024, be approved as submitted? So moved.
Second.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Board members, questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Okay, we are on special reports.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start with a special report. Our partners from Campus Construction Management are here to provide an update on our capital improvement project.
Good evening, everybody.
Appreciate the big crowd coming out specifically for construction update. No pressure from the crowd over there. No, thank you guys for having us. Obviously, as you've seen in the past, we like to check in quarterly or as much as possible to give update on where we're at with the current project and where we will be in the near future. So with that, I will let Gianna take over.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Starting off with the Transportation Center.
You got the clicker?
Oh, yes, I do. Sorry. And before I move on, a nice aerial photo of the multipurpose field there. That was about 85% done at that point, so we're going to be doing finished photos, aerial photos, when it's all complete.
Is the clicker on?
Nope. Technology.
It's warming up.
There we go.
There we go. Phase one, transportation and facilities. The first photo at the top is a photo of the fuel island. The second one at the top is an aerial photo of the building. The bottom right photo is an aerial photo showing the entrance from Plank Road all the way down to Jackson. The top of that is a fuel island that you can see in the bottom right corner. And then the bottom right photo there is the finished product of the concrete slab that we poured for the bus maintenance bay.
Yeah, so with this project, we had a really quick start on the site construction. Once we got into the ground with foundations, it was an extremely wet winter into spring, as most of us know. So it slowed down a bit. We've been working with the contractors for the past few months to kind of coordinate efforts and get everybody aligned to gain some efficiencies. And over the last two or three months, things have really picked up. If you've been driving past the site, you'll see that a lot has been completed with, you know, other than the maintenance bay doors, it's almost completely weather tight at this point. All of our concrete, all of our concrete is done. Getting that done ahead of the cold weather, getting our asphalt done ahead of the cold weather was, was huge. So now all efforts are moved to inside the building, and they're making really good progress with that thus far.
And the timeline, we're looking for turning the space over would be early 2025 right now. I know that the district is going to be working on moving furniture into the spaces, so we're working closely with the facilities director on that. So that's definitely improved since our last update. Some other pluses on that, we did get permanent power for the building, so that's complete now. We also got the gas service connected to the building. And like I said, we're full speed ahead on finishes inside the building, so I actually have some more photos in here. This top left photo is the dispatch office on the first floor by the lounge. The top right photo is kind of a second floor view of the building and grounds bay. And then the bottom view is the conference room on the second floor, next to the training room. Moving on to phase two, which is, first part is the commons. So I have a couple photos here. The top left photo is the inside of the commons right now. We're prepping for finishes in that space. The second photo at the top is the, will going to be the new entrance to the commons, the exterior entrance that will go into the courtyard. The courtyard space, we're going to be doing this coming summer.
Yeah, and just for photo's sake, that's a temporary condition.
Yes.
The particle board will be removed and...
Yes.
But it's going to look great.
The bottom right photo is the kitchen, the food service area. And then the bottom right is the hood.
Yeah, so within this space, obviously, there's a ton of work on the inside of there. Had to cut large openings in the exterior of that building, and we all know the uniqueness to the shape and the construction of that building. So you'll see the big differences when you walk in there for the first time, is now there's a lot of natural light and things going into there. So that space is really coming along. To say that it was easy would be a complete lie. But the, the great part is, we met with a lot of the finish folks the other day, and the tile and everything is going to start. And it's really, it's really what kicks off the final steps in getting a space ready for turnover. So it was a, it was a big week.
And we have been working with the principal to, for the turnover of the space. We originally had the Christmas break that we're going to be turning over. Due to some long lead items, it's really not going to be possible at this point. So we've done some game planning with her as far as moving back in, and we'll be able to turn the space over prior to the February break. In the meantime, probably early January, you know, the district can move things in accordingly at that point as well. All right, moving out to the field, so there's some nice photos of the field. Aerial photos, photos of detailing the wording into the carpet, the home plate over there. So at this point, we're substantially complete with the field. There's just some remaining site items that we're working with the site contractor on to get finished, and that will be able to be turned over probably in December, ready for the spring season.
Yeah, the playing surface is 100% at this point. So there's going to be a lot of excited folks that are walking past it. We will just caution, it is still a construction area, so as best as we can to keep people off the field. I know it's going to be a struggle. A lot of people are very excited now that it's done. But like Gianna said, there's still some scopes of work that we have to complete on the exterior, some concrete. We're waiting on the press boxes, but it's, it's really taking shape. It's an impressive field, and we're excited to get it turned over.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Board members, questions or comments?
It looks great, both. I can't wait to go back into the transportation building.
Oh, yeah.
We saw it when it was in like the first phase or stage, so it'll be nice to see with it being finished.
Far less tripping hazards.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, so I did bring brief financial update. I know everybody wants to hear the financials, but no. All good news to report. We're trending right where we should be financially as far as change orders versus money budget and contingencies. As far as looking at, at the next phase, phase three, into some of the other buildings, the dollars that we have allocated, some of the areas where we can pull money from, we're, we're in really good shape to be able to award almost all that scope of work. And as we get closer and closer, we free up more and more dollars that we're, we're holding and placing contingency, which our contingency is the pot of money where we, we pay change orders and things like that out of. So things are trending really well. The project's very successful. So it's all good news to report.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add how much I appreciate your partnership? And I don't think that the community or the board knows how involved Dr. Driffl is in every step of this process, from the finance to the discussion around the changes, around the addition, like any of that. So I just want to really celebrate this evening, the work that we've been able to do in partnership with you, and also celebrate how hard Dr. Driffl works to make sure that this project is moving forward in all the ways that we need it to. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The crowd will probably follow us out. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, so now we have our student representative report from Helen Bruckus.
Hello, everyone. Lots of great things happening in the district, as I'm sure most people know. District-wide, we celebrated Red Ribbon Week to support drug prevention with Spirit Days and more. Students, staff, and families had a great time dancing, singing, and trying new foods at the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. The Halloween-themed Community Building Day was a huge hit. Students wrapped their peers and teachers in toilet paper to become mummies. That was my favorite part. At the high school, the boys volleyball team is doing incredibly well. They are still undefeated, and on Thursday, they will play Fairport in finals. Best Buddies carved pumpkins to decorate the outside of the high school, and the boys' soccer team collected donations for the Penfield Food Shelf. And College Spanish 1 and 2 students attended a Day of the Dead celebration with Senor Lozio in Medina, New York. At Bay Trail, the International Club is celebrating Diwali on Thursday by making lanterns. The Gingerbread Club has started signups and will begin having lots of gingerbread fun to celebrate the season. And students have the opportunity to vote for their favorite book genre in the library as a celebration of our democracy. At Scribner, students will visit the Planetarium to learn more about our universe. Lots of things going on at Cobble's, including the Book Fair returning this month, starting today. At Indian Landing, students carved pumpkins and paraded around the loop in their costumes. And at Harris Hill, the Spooktacular was, as always, huge fun for students, parents, and volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, treasurer's report? All right, can I please have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, the general fund budget status report, the school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending July 31st, 2024, be approved?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Okay, superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you. If you haven't noticed, we have Cobble's here this evening. So excitedly, we are going to reorganize our agenda. We want to make sure that our students are able to share with us this evening so that we don't, you know, miss their bedtimes. So we're going to invite Cobble's to come over to provide an update. One of the things that we're working to do is to make sure that there is more student presence and voice at our board meetings. And so last month, we invited Penfield High School, and this month, we have Cobble's Elementary School. And so at this time, we'd like to have our principal, Mrs. Nicole Whitehead, join us with Cobble's students.
Come this way?
Yeah. Stand right in front of the...
Stand right here?
Yep.
Okay, because we have groups.
Yep.
We're in groups.
I have a loud voice, but not all of them do.
There we go. Great. Okay. Clicker? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for inviting us to be here. We're excited to be here. We're also really excited to be the first elementary school to do this. So I told them, I know that they're going to set the bar really, really high, and it's going to be really hard for all the other schools to follow. And that's why I wanted to go first, because I have the utmost confidence in our kids. So really excited that we have members of our 5th grade Student Advisory Team here with us tonight, as well as some members of our SDM team. And if our members of the SDM team could just step forward, they're going to real quickly just talk real quickly about the purpose of what tonight is for. So we have Linda Loy, Crystal Oaks, and Erin Telix. They are on our SDM. And then I would be remiss if I did not introduce Ms. Kaylee Northrup, who has finished her first month at Cobble's. She came back after the first day, which is a great sign. We're loving having Ms. Northrup with us. It's been a delight. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Loy.
Hi. So representatives from Cobble's Student Advisory 5th Grade Team and our Shared Decision-Making Team Committee will showcase the work that has been completed over the past years by these two committees.
Thank you in advance for giving us the opportunity to share some of what we feel makes Cobble's special.
So with that, we are now going to have, each student group has something special to present. So we will get started. So just like we practiced today, each of you in your groups, you can come over here, okay?
Hi, I'm Zach.
I'm Ansley.
And I'm Paige. We are going to talk about the Cobble's Cares Promise. Last year, 4th grade Student Advisory made up a school motto. It was made into posters that were placed around the school and videos that were shown to all students.
Motto is Cobble's cares about ourselves, each other, and Cobble's.
Our motto, our motto, our motto represents our promise that all students and staff make to be caring, kind, and responsible throughout Cobble's, including the bus and playground.
And how do we start all of our school assemblies?
By, by talking about the Cobble's Cares Promise.
Awesome job, you guys.
Hi, I'm Colin.
I'm Maya.
And my name is Ari. We are presenting the Cobble's chant. As a student advisory last year, we made a chant to show that we care, and this is how it goes.
C-O-B-V-L-E-S, where caring is what we do best.
We made this because it represents how much we care about each other and, and this school. We start all of our assemblies with the chant and Cobble's promise so that everybody knows to be caring.
Thank you for listening.
Can I just add that if anybody wants to take pictures of the kids doing this, if you come around here, you can get them faced on. So don't hesitate just to come up and do that, okay?
Hi, I'm Eli.
Hi, I'm Kaylin.
Hi, I'm Callie.
And hi, I'm Zora. Today, we will presenting about, we will be presenting about Cameron. First of all, this is Cameron.
He is our school mascot.
We are proud because we made him our official school mascot last year.
He represents our Penfield pride.
And that Cobble's cares.
We always remember that Cobble's cares because there are pictures and posters around the school.
When someone follows the Cobble's promise, they get a Cameron's Caring Ally sticker.
The Cameron's Caring Ally sticker is really important to Cobble's students.
Thank you for listening and learning about Cameron.
Thanks for listening.
Hi, I'm Bella.
And I'm Lauren. We think these posters impact the Cobble's community because they give an understanding to all the students of the expected behavior in all shared spaces, including the bus, bathroom, hallway, and cafeteria.
We had the same posters in every classroom to remind students, to remind students the expected behaviors throughout Cobble's. Also, the teachers brought these posters to life by participating and making videos that were shown to every student in the beginning of the year.
Hi, I'm Kinsley.
Hi, I'm Kami.
And hi, I'm Addie. We are presenting the Cobble's Cares Song. This song is created by Ms. Ossman. She wrote this song based on On Top of Spaghetti.
Yeah, and it teaches us about the importance of caring, and now we end all assemblies with this song.
This song also comes with some fun dance moves. Now we will sing this song.
Take care of ourselves. It's truly a breeze. Take care of each other, 'cause friendship is key. Take care of our Cobble's, from ceiling to floor. 'Cause Cobble's is caring, oh, that we are sure.
Hi, my name is Alex.
Hi, my name is Evan.
And hi, my name is Lydia. And we are presenting about other achievements and events at Cobble's that we are proud of. Every year, we have a fundraiser. Last year, we raised more than $27,000, and this year, we raised more than $31,000. Ms. Whitehead even had to kiss a real hedgehog because we exceeded our goal. We are proud of this because all of the money raised goes back to the school. In fact, some of the money is helping to buy every student a book at this week's book fair.
Every year, 5th grade, 5th graders and teachers play together in a basketball game. They form two teams, a red team and a white team, and they face off in a, in a, in an electric match. It wouldn't be a Cobble's event without a charity involved. 5th graders get to choose which charity we donate to. Other events include ice cream social, bingo night, and movie night, and their sole purpose is to have fun and bring our Cobble's community together.
Other things we are really proud of is the fact that our Student Advisory Group advocated for three new things to be added to our school, and they are, and they each were: a talent show, a drama club, and a monthly school-wide assembly. Thanks for listening.
We do just want to add that in addition to those awesome things that our students just listed, we also added a yearbook club and a yoga club for students as well.
And a couple of other things that we do at Cobble's is we will be having a Veterans Day Parade on Thursday, and our Cobble's Caring Council does a lot of things each month, but one of the things we're the most proud of is that they collect food for the Penfield Food Shelf.
And that is the Cobble Showcase. So at this time, does anybody have any questions? They are prepared and excited to answer questions.
Board members, questions or comments?
I just love when you guys all get together and practice the way you do. You make yourselves proud, and you make your families proud, and it's just, you did a great job.
Thank you so much for coming here tonight and probably interrupting your dinner and your bedtime and your homework. You did such a marvelous job, and you should be very proud of yourselves. Well done, folks. Well done.
And I just want to add that the excitement and the enthusiasm on your face is exactly why we sit up here. It's because of you that we volunteer our time, and you just make what we do worth every single second that we spend. So thanks for being awesome, and thanks for being you and making Cobble's a great place to be. I just want to add, thank you guys for coming. I know that, you know, it takes a lot to come and get in front of adults, right? You guys did such a great job. The other schools have a lot to kind of meet up, right? Match up to, they have a lot to, a lot of work to do, right? And I just have one question. Did anyone get a picture or a video of Mrs. Whitehead kissing that hedgehog? Okay, just, just so you guys have it. Just, you know, you might need it at some point.
It may have happened twice.
Oh.
Kissed the first time that it was blocking the 1st graders, and they couldn't see, so then I had to kiss it again.
That's great. Good job, guys. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
And Principal Whitehead, thank you for all of your work and for coming to bring the members of your school teams, your student advisory, and your shared decision-making team to be part of our meeting this evening. Thank you. You all were amazing. Thank you for coming.
Extra recess for all of them.
Who has to follow after that?
I know, I know.
Families, thank you for bringing them this evening. We are so grateful for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should have had some candy for them.
I know, something, like a little...
It's not enough to go ratting.
She's like candy as I'm eating the candy. Yeah.
You're going to want the clicker.
I gotta, I gotta do it. I'll, I'll take it.
I love how you did that, Mrs. Whitehead.
The what?
I love how you came running in with the clicker. Okay, you know, the question is, how do we follow that? But we still have more to share and provide updates for the community this evening. So superintendent's reports this evening, we have student and staff honors. We also have Penfield Central School District updates. We will be hearing from Dr. Leslie Maloney. She'll provide an update from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. We have Ms. Micahniza Perez, which will also provide an update on the Office of Equity and Access. And Dr. Kenny will provide an update from the Office of Human Resources. I'll also share some information relative to our building emergency response plans. Then we'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl, who will provide an update around our business and financial discussions. And we were going to have school showcase with Cobble's, but of course, we excitedly moved them ahead in our agenda. So with that, we'll start with our student and staff honors. And we are happy to announce and congratulate our students who have been selected to participate in the New York State School Music Association All-State Festival this month. And so please look for their names in the agenda. Will you transition for me, please? Hochstein Youth Symphony Orchestra. Congratulations to the students who have been selected to participate... Congratulations to the students who have been selected to participate in the Hochstein Youth Symphony Orchestra for the 2024-25 school year. So, congratulations to Allison, Zoe, Carissa, Adam, and Alex. We also have a teacher recognition. Congratulations to Bay Trail Health Teacher Maddie Kenneely for receiving the New York State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Graduate Recognition Award in Health. She will receive the award at an annual conference in November. So, we wanted to share some updates from the Scribner Environmental Club. This club has been on fire. So there are a number of things that they've been involved in over the past several weeks. So this club was invited to tour the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf Shelter after donating vegetables from their garden to the food shelf. They were also invited to tour the Penfield Town Hall and participate in a mock town board meeting. And further, they will be joining Penfield Town officials in spreading milkweed seeds at Shadow Pines on November 6th to help encourage monarch butterfly migration. How about that? How about that, Scribner Environmental Club? Robotics Proclamation. The town of Penfield is recognizing the Penfield Central School District's robotics program in a proclamation at its November 6th board meeting as part of its formal recognition of STEAM Day on November 8th. Congratulations to all of the robotics teams. National Honor Society. Yesterday, Penfield High School held its fall induction ceremony for the National Honor Society. Congratulations to the new inductees. And so now, as we move into our district updates, I'd like to share that Indian Landing celebrated and honored their school's history. There was a mural dedication, and this beautiful mural was dedicated in front of the school last month. Current Indian Landing students, alumni, and community members worked with artist Sean Dunwoodie to design and create the mural, which reflects the timeline and history of both the school and the surrounding community. It proudly celebrates the history of Indian Landing School, and it embodies the school's vision for the future as a place we love to be. So, we wanted to bring some of the experience to the board meeting this evening, and so there's a video. It's about four minutes long, and what you're going to witness is all of our students that were a part of this dedication, they're going to highlight the history of Indian Landing and the meaning behind each section of the mural. So again, another opportunity to showcase our students.
The Embracing Our Roots, Celebrating Our Future mural project celebrates the history of who we are and embodies our vision for the future as a place we love to be. Indian Landing students, staff, alumni, and community members were directly involved in designing and creating a mural that reflects the timeline and history of both our school and the greater Rochester community. More than just artwork, this mural embodies the spirit of community placemaking as a vibrant testament to the identity of our school and the surrounding area.
Journey along with us as the Indian Landing students share with you the story of the mural.
Look for the native plants and animals such as the black bear, whitetail deer, and beaver that are indigenous to the area.
Look for the representation of the tree, of a tree where parts of the bark have been removed. In the indigenous community, scrapping trees was a way to mark change. This is the space where a plaque will be hung to commemorate Indian Landing's 75th anniversary and the creation of this mural.
Look for the canoes filled with trading items that would have been found at the Indian Landing, an important location in the early history of our country. This was the start of the Ohio Trail, which ran from Canada to the Mississippi Valley.
Look for the train. The new Central and Hudson railroads were a significant part of the economy and industry that, in the area. The sparks from these nearby railroads that caused the town's one-room school has to burn to the ground in 1910.
Look for the heart-shaped hands around the world representing our diverse community and Indian Landing as a place we love to be.
Look for the schoolhouse that represents Kelly Road School. This school was one of the first in the area and represents the start of what we know now as Indian Landing Elementary.
As the number of students grew, there is a need for more space. In 1914, Brighton School Number 7 was constructed at the corner of Penfield Road and Landing Road. In 1934, Brighton School Number 7 was renamed Indian Landing School in honor of the past history of trading between the indigenous community and colonizers. A brand-new Indian Landing School was built in 1949, which is where we stand today.
The sky's the limit. Look for the books opening our mind to a whole new world.
Look for the brilliant bald eagle representing our school mascot partner, our district Penfield Patriots, and our unwavering commitment to freedom for all.
Look for the bright and bold colors and shapes woven throughout the mural, representing the creativity and colorful imagination of our Indian Landing students.
Look for the oak leaves and acorns which depict the trees that are still standing in Ellison Park. It is possible that some of the same trees existed 300 years ago when the Indian Landing was a trading hub during the period of colonization.
Look for the brilliant feathers within the mural and on the chimney. Feathers are a significant symbol in Native American culture, representing a connection to the Creator, the owner of the feather and the bird it came from. Feathers are deeply revered and can symbolize many things, including honor. Feathers are a sign of high honor and are often given to recognize achievements. Strength. Feathers represent strength, courage, and the ability to accomplish great tasks. Wisdom. Feathers can symbolize wisdom and the ability to see things clearly. Spirituality. Feathers can be used in ceremonies to connect with sky gods and gain spiritual knowledge. New beginnings. Feathers can symbolize new beginnings and freedom.
These are just a few examples of the rich history and tapestry of narratives that are captured in the Embracing Our Roots, Celebrating Our Future mural. Through our artist-in-residency collaboration with Rochester artist Sean Dunwoodie, we were able to pay homage to the profound heritage of this region and celebrate the enduring legacy of Indian Landing School.
So, I'll just say how extremely proud I am of the work of Indian Landing Principal Marcy Ware. We started these conversations, and she had a vision for how we could celebrate and uplift Indian Landing as part of the 75th anniversary. And so this truly is a legacy that she lives, leaves on that community, and all of the work, the planning, the student involvement, even to this video, who I know she says she'll take no credit for the video because Assistant Principal Eric Troggett put this together. However, I really want to acknowledge every bit of work that she did to bring this to life. If you drive by Indian Landing and just as you watch this, it is beautiful, absolutely beautiful. So, I'm glad that we were able to have our students' voices as part of this evening's presentation. Okay, so now I am going to turn it over, actually, no, I'm not. I am gonna keep talking. So, we held our first coffee and conversation on October 29th. We offered both an AM and a PM session, and this was an opportunity for members of our community to come and meet senior cabinet. So, all of senior cabinet was there. We were able to listen to the thoughts, the wonders, the questions, any areas that were made as part of recommendations for things that we want to consider as opportunities for improvement, and this coffee conversation, we held one in the fall, and we look forward to future coffee conversations where we're inviting and calling members of our community in. And so now, I think I'll turn it over to Dr. Maloney, who will share with us curriculum and instruction update.
So, actually, Tasha, this is a perfect transition. I did not realize that you were going to talk about the coffee conversations prior to my slides, but I just wanted to say, my team from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, we found the coffee conversations last week to be a great opportunity for us to hear feedback from the community, and specifically, oops, I'm sorry, specifically feedback that the community would like to see more information regarding academic performance. And so, the 2024 New York State 3-8 Math, ELA, and Science Tests, along with the 2024 Regents Exams, are still embargoed at the state level. So, embargo means that districts cannot discuss local results at public meetings prior to New York State publicly releasing the data from a state perspective. They typically talk about what student performance looked like across the state, and then they give districts permission to have the conversations and share specific district data. So, once that data is unembargoed, we'll be sure to include that in an upcoming presentation. But tonight, I would like to talk about AP exams, as AP is not New York State-specific. So, some questions have come up regarding the US News and World Report's College Readiness Index. And though my presentation will explain the college readiness score as well as students' performance on AP exams. So, I wanted to start with this statement, as it was recently shared with me by College Board. So, College Board research indicates that students who earn a score of 1 or 2 across their AP exams in high school have better college outcomes than academically similar college students who did not take an AP course and an exam. And I would even modify this to say, students who earn a minimum score of 1 or 2 across their AP exams in high school, because as you may know, AP exams are scored on a scale of 1 through 5. And I bolded an italicized "and" because as you will see, as I go through the data, the associated AP exam is not a requirement of an AP course. So, some students take the course and yet do not take the AP exam, and that's something that we want to dig in, dig deeper into as a district, but I'll talk a little bit more about that throughout the presentation. So, let's start by taking a look at some historical data relative to the AP exams, and I wanted to be able to show before COVID, during COVID, and after COVID. Because unlike the New York State exams, AP found a way to push through, through COVID. So, but let's, let me back up a little bit. So this chart shows the percentage of total Penfield students who took AP exams and scored a 3, 4, or a 5 by year. So, looking at 2019, 81% of students who took the exams scored 3 or above. 2020 was 83%. 2021, there was a dip to 75%. 2022, 77%. We start coming back up. 2023, 79%. And then, currently in 2024, 84% of students who took AP exams scored a 3 or better. So you can see that our data dipped a bit through COVID, and now students are actually performing better than in 2019. So I do want to talk about the 2020 exam. So, those of you who had students taking exams that year may remember. So, students had the choice. They could take the exam digitally at home or via paper and pencil at school. So I just wanted to remind folks of that. So taking a look at, let's dig in a little bit deeper to this graph, which shows the number of Penfield students who took AP exams versus the number of exams administered by year. So remember, a student may take multiple AP courses, and then consequently, multiple AP exams in one year. So the first bar for each year indicates the number of Penfield students who took AP exams that year. And then the second bar for the year indicates the number of AP exams. So again, as you can see, through COVID, there were some dips in both numbers, particularly in 2021, where there were 306 students who took AP exams and 502 AP exams administered. But in 2024, again, where our data is looking better than even prior to COVID, with 464 students taking 820 AP exams. So I just want to remind the board and the community that the more students taking AP courses and associated AP exams means more students are experiencing the rigor of a college-level course while in high school, and potentially saving the cost of a college course for their family. So, let's dig in a little bit deeper because, to the US News and World Report's College Readiness Index, because I know amongst folks within the community, I've received some questions relative to this number, and I think you really need to dig in into it. So each year, US News and World Report ranks high schools, and according to their ranking, PHS is recognized as a badge-eligible school. So what does that mean? They are badge-eligible for the best high school award badge. So, public high schools that earned a ranking in the top 40% nationally are recognized as eligible for the best high school award badge. So, US News and World Report looks at a number of data points. And as I mentioned, one that has raised some questions recently is this college readiness index, as PHS scored a 42.9 out of 100. And when comparing to other local districts, the 42.9 seems low. And this slide describes how the data is used to arrive at the college readiness index. So you'll see that there's two different rates that are determined. There's a participation rate that's weighted 70, or excuse me, 25%, and then there's a quality-adjusted participation rate that's weighted 75%. I do want to note that the data that's used for this current index is from the class of 2022. So remember, when we looked at this historical data, that was a year that we saw dips. And if you think about those seniors' stories, they would have been sophomores during the COVID shutdown in 2020. Then their junior year was the hybrid year, and then their senior year was back to normal. So, still, some folks ask, why does PHS not have a higher score than 42.9? So a couple of points to keep in mind. So for a number of years, PHS has taken pride in offering multiple opportunities for students to experience college-level courses during high school through both AP courses as well as dual-credit courses. We currently offer 15 AP courses and 29 dual-credit options from Syracuse University, RIT, and MCC. So, when reviewing the course offerings at other local districts that may have similar college readiness indexes, they typically offer a similar number of AP courses, which makes sense. Their college-ready index is similar to ours. Those with higher college readiness indexes offer more AP courses. Well, that being said, some of those districts offer more AP courses, but do not offer as many dual-credit offerings. I wish that there was a way for the college readiness index to capture those dual-credit options, because those dual-credit options are still providing students with a college-level experience in high school, and they may potentially save a family the cost of a college course after high school. So, since this data that US News and World Report is looking at is from 2022, I wanted to dig in more deeply to the 2024 results, and I'm just gonna, we looked at those slides. So the 2024 AP exams. So here's some interesting data around the 2024 AP exams. So based on the number of students rostered in the AP courses, 839 AP tests could have been administered. Yet only 808 AP tests were administered for students rostered in AP courses. So another way to look at this is 96% So, another way to look at this is 96% of the time, students who were rostered in an AP course took the associated AP exam. But what about that 4%? They were taking the class, yet why did they not take the exam? So, 820 total AP exams were administered to Penfield students. Hold on a second, Leslie, didn't you just tell us there were 839 or 808? Well, just remember that some of those exams were for students who elected to challenge an AP test for a course we do not offer. This happens every year, particularly with foreign languages. But I think last year, there may have been a student who took AP Computer Science test. We didn't offer that course last year. We are offering it this year. But of those 820 total AP exams that Penfield students took, 100 out of those utilized the fee-reduction opportunity for families in need. So, that begs the question, did some of those, that 4%, did they not take the test because they weren't aware of the fee-reduction opportunity? Or, again, we don't know specifically, but lots to, lots to dig into. So, I know this one is hard to read. When I tried to put the numbers on, it made it messier. So, let me, I will dig into it and kind of walk you through it. So, continuing with the 2024 data, when we dig into the race and ethnicity of the students who took the 2024 AP exams, this is what we see. So, the dark red line is the percentage of students within the district, and the bright red line is the percentage of the Penfield students who took the 2024 AP exams. So, we would accept, we would expect to see the bars close together or similar. So, 3% of students did not take, did not indicate their race or ethnicity when taking the 2024 AP exams. From a district perspective, we had 0% of students who identified as Alaskan Native or American Indian, which was the same for the percentage of students who took the 2024 AP exams. The percentage of students who identified as multiracial was 5% within the district, as well as 5% amongst the students who took the AP exams. 81% of students within the district identified as white, whereas 76% of students taking the 2024 AP exams identified as white. 6% of students within the district identified as Hispanic or Latino, whereas 8% of students taking the 2024 AP exams identified as Hispanic or Latino. And then, 5% of students within the district identified as Black or African-American, where 4% of students taking the 2024 AP exams identified as Black or African-American. And then, lastly, 3% of students within the district identified as Asian, whereas 5% of the students taking the 2024 AP exams identified as Asian. So, we're going to take this data a step further, and take a look at how those students who, based on how they identified their race, their ethnicity amongst the courses. So, last year, we offered 13 AP courses. So, looking by race and ethnicity, not all races and ethnicities were represented in all of the AP courses. And that leaves us wondering, why is this? So, the students who identified as multiracial were represented in only 10 of the 13 AP courses. That begs the question, why? Whereas, students who identified as white were represented in all 13 AP courses. Students who identified as Hispanic or Latino were represented in 12 of the 13 AP courses. Students who identified as Black or African-American were represented in only 8 of the AP courses. Why is this? Students who identified as Asian were represented in only 10 of the 13 AP courses. Again, we ask the question, why? So, this data certainly leaves some questions on the table. Today, I talked to Marie Mustafa George, who is our new Director for Family Cultural and Family Student Engagement, and she has been working with BSU. She had some follow-up questions that she wondered based on the data. But then, we dug into gender. So, the district was comprised of 51% female students, and of the students who took the 2024 AP exams, 60% were female. Oops, I shifted my slide, sorry. While the district was comprised of 49% male students, the 39% of the students who took the 2024 AP exams were male. And then, 1% identify, either they did not identify on the exam their gender, or they identified as other. So, what does this mean for the upcoming school year, the 2025 AP exams? So, certainly, as a district, we have been looking to increase the number of students taking AP courses. This year, we have added AP African-American Studies and AP Computer Science. We have also removed the cost of AP exams for families through the use of BOSI's funds, and families will not need to have to incur the cost of the exam. We are also allowing students the opportunity to challenge themselves by removing the course tracks and prerequisites. What do I mean when I say remove course tracks? So, this is where the conversation, the question often comes, AP versus honors courses. So, we have removed honors courses as they were creating course tracks, so that if a student did not get in a specific course in middle school, they were not able to take AP courses. So, let's talk about AP courses versus honors courses. So, I probably should have titled this slide, AP and Dual-Credit Courses in Comparison with Honors Courses. AP Course Curricula is standardized, whereas honors curricula is developed within the district. Colleges have no idea how honors geometry in Penfield compares to honors geometry in Reno, Nevada, for example, when comparing students' transcripts. Yet, colleges know AP course curricula, and with dual-credit courses, colleges review the actual student, the student's actual transcript from the college that the dual-credit was earned from. So, eliminating honors courses essentially increases opportunities for students to take AP or dual-credit courses, as the honors courses are no longer competing. Students do not have to make that choice. And one of the four core principles of the Culture, Response, and Sustaining Education Framework is high expectations and rigorous instruction for all students. Removing honors courses helps to provide more students with the opportunities to take college-level courses well in high school. So, what about beyond 2025? So, as we move beyond this school year, we will continue to review the AP course offerings and the dual-credit offerings through our curriculum review cycle with the goal of increasing offerings. We plan to dig into the AP participation data to identify ways to increase participation across specific subgroups. How do we ensure that all races and ethnicities are represented in all AP courses? What barriers exist? So, similar to socioeconomic status, we removed the barrier of the exam fee. What other barriers need to be removed? And we are also looking at increasing opportunities for acceleration at the middle school and high school, allowing for students to potentially access AP or dual-credit courses earlier in their high school career, with the goal of essentially taking more AP courses or dual-credit courses over the course of their four years at PHS. So, I know that was a lot, but I wanted to, that College Readiness Index from U.S. World News and Reports has come up a couple of times. And then, I also wanted to be able to share some academic student performance, because we're hearing from the community that they'd like to see more of that. My office will also be, we're starting a newsletter that will be bi-monthly, and my team, after hearing the feedback and the community conversations, we will be including standing articles and little blurbs around academic data, so that families have access to that as well. Any questions?
One question, one comment. The question is, I think you said that there were 15 AP courses and then 29 dual-credit, so that's 44 college-level courses. And then, but other, like some of the neighboring districts, like maybe Webster or Fairport doesn't have the dual-credit courses?
So, I'll give an example of one of our neighboring districts that I looked at. I was surprised to see they don't have the offerings from RIT, which our RIT offerings are Project Lead the Way. And I was surprised, I thought most of the, I thought honestly, all of the schools within Monroe-Knee offered Project Lead the Way. So, I was surprised to see that. And really, the opportunities and the partnerships that each high school builds with individual colleges, it's really independent of the high school, and so, and the district. So, other districts have different partnerships than we do.
So, so, even, so, there are 44 opportunities, but only 15 of those are counted in the, in the, in the college readiness index.
And actually, at, at that ti, you know, that's a really good point. Nicole, last year, there were 13 AP courses, but that index was from 2022. I didn't think to go back to the 21-22 school year to see how many AP courses were offered at that time, particularly having been in the COVID years, not everything always ran. So, I'll have to, now you've got me wondering.
Okay, great. And my comment real quick is, just, you know, every year, I waste paper and toner and print out the high school course offerings, because I'm a paper person and I need a highlighter, and just go through, and I talk to my kids and say, you know, you should take this, you should take this, what about taking this? So, it's, it, what I'm getting at is, if, if parents don't do that, and if kids don't do that, it might not happen. So, it's, because it's not like, you'll be told by the counselor, you need to take this, and you need to take that. But the counselor won't say, hey, what about AP, U.S. Government, and Economics, you know, which one of my sons is taking right now. So, so, if, if you're not proactive and intentional, or if your, if the parents aren't, that's another reason why kids might not take it.
So, that's a really good point, Nicole. Most of our departments, and I, look, Aaron Zimmerman is in the audience, the Social Studies Department Chair, I know his department does this. When it's time for students to select courses, they do, each, each teacher goes through, what are your options next year? And these are the options for next year's social studies courses. And teachers will often say to students individually, you know, this would be a great course for you, this would be a great course for you, here's what their, here's what our offerings are. And when I was talking with Marie Mustafa George today, she brought that up in terms of our teachers, should we be encouraging teachers to nudge kids and push kids towards more of the AP offerings?
And also the Project Lead the Way.
And the dual-credit courses.
Yeah.
And I hadn't thought of that piece in terms of how much teachers have.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's just a reminder to parents, like, be involved, too.
Yep.
Know what's in the, it is a little intimidating, it's 50 pages long, and, but at the same time, there are lots of classes that my kids have taken that they wouldn't have taken if I didn't say, you should take this.
Well, another piece of feedback that came up at the Coffee Conversations was elementary families, elementary parents saying, can you share with us what courses and what opportunities exist beyond elementary? And I was surprised to hear that, because to me, I would think that would be overwhelming. But it came up multiple times, and so, that's something that we can easily share with families. They also mentioned the graduation requirements. I think we have a great visual for that, that's included in the course guide, that we can easily share with families. And so, like I said, my team really appreciated the feedback that we got at the Coffee Conversation. We really appreciated the way that Dr. Potter structured both sessions, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we can help give the community more of the information that they're looking for.
In connection to Dr. Maloney's reference to the newsletter, and having an opportunity to share more information with families, I think that that also serves as an opportunity to make a connection to the course catalog, talk about the offerings, have some hyperlinks, to, to just inform and provide as much information as possible. So, I am really excited about the newsletter that will be coming from, you know, both of the offices, from our district, to really specifically highlight all of the ways that students are demonstrating growth, our academic achievement, and how our expectations around providing rigorous instruction for all students have not wavered. I think the data kind of speaks to the process of growth over time, but also, we had this dip because of the time that our country was experiencing some turmoil. But I do think in all, the, the review of this information tonight helps us understand that we want to share more information with families, and, and also, Nicole, to your point, provide ways that we can have some resources and some links embedded in the newsletter moving forward.
I just have a comment. Leslie, thank you for this report. It was very informative, and I fully, I was very fortunate that I have two older children who are in college right now, and I have a younger one who will be at high school next year. But I was fortunate with my two older ones, that they knew exactly what they were doing and what they were about. So, they would come to me with the course catalog and go like, hey, this is what's going on. And I'm like, okay, great, why not? I don't foresee that happening with the third one. So, I would appreciate the hyperlinks and all that good stuff. Having said that, I also really appreciate the removal of the cost barrier, because I remember having my two kiddos, who were just a year apart, I had to find $1,000 for them to do their courses. And I thought, oh, goodness me. But it had to be done, right? Because it was college credit, and they really enjoyed them, and, you know, that experience. So, for folks who, that is a barrier to them, I, I appreciate the, and why hasn't it happened before? But anyway, you know.
So, actually, the College Board representative asked that, asked that of our BOSIs and said, why hasn't, why haven't you offered this out to districts before now? So, we didn't know it was possible, and we, we're.
Right. But now we know.
Now we know.
No better, do better.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
I just have two, like, connections. So, when you were talking about the tracking at middle school, I know I shared this at our board workshop, but I had a kiddo who, in 7th grade, missed the cutoff of taking a 10th-grade Regents class because, by 1 point. He's like, Mom, I really, really want to take this class. So, I called up the principal at Bay Trail and said, he really wants to take this. And she said, well, if he wants to go for it, it's the best thing for him, but if I hadn't pushed for it, and he hadn't pushed for it, it wouldn't have happened, because he was being tracked, because he was literally 1 point below the requirement to take, and he was quite successful, even though it happened, he was taking it during the COVID shutdown. And then, also, I know I have several friends whose child has entered freshman year as a sophomore because of all of the dual credits.
At college, yeah.
At college. So, a lot of my friend's kids, their 4th year in college, they're actually starting their masters. So, the amount of money that they're saving is like upwards of $30,000 to $50,000, depending on what school they're going to. So, $1,000, like pricey, but like, in the grand scheme, like, I'm glad we're removing that barrier. But I was like, wow, that's, you know, $40,000, $50,000 to save, like, that's pretty huge, because college is not inexpensive by any means. So, I just wanted to make that connection. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For explaining and sharing. I think it was very important for us to know, as well as for the rest of the community, because I think a lot of people did have questions, and so, it's awesome that you, you know, put it in this way, so everyone could really understand it. Great job.
Now, going to have an update from the Office of Equity and Access from Micah Nitsa Perez.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. I'm very pleased to provide an update on the ongoing efforts to advance equity and access in, in Penfield. The first one, I'd like to give a shout-out to Rock to Change. So, this year, the summit is entirely student. So this year, the summit is entirely student and planned and facilitated, designed to empower high school youth to become effective change agents across geography, race, and life experiences. Our combined planning team comprises of thirty dedicated students from both districts who have been meeting virtually every week since the start of the school year. Last week, our Penfield High School students traveled to the Edison Campus and the RCSD to hold a very successful in-person planning session where they build community and share their perspectives on this year's summit theme. In the coming weeks, the planning will continue as we work to finalize our breakout sessions and learning and engaging practices and more. So as you see, this is a event which will host six hundred students from all over thirty-three schools and districts. And it's very special this year because we're hosting in collaboration and partnership with RCSD. And our students have done an amazing job just planning and leading, just being their, you know, their best version of themselves in terms of leading this work. So we look forward to the event, which is on November twenty-second at Bozies. Our next one is a shout out to our Empire State Games. This occurred on October eighteenth. Some of our students, athletes completed, competed at the Empire State Games at the SUNY Brockport Campus. Students from the elementary and secondary buildings participated in the opening ceremony. They competed in track and field events and celebrated their achievements with their teammates and buddies from the Penfield High School. Following the games, students were presented with medals, which is very special. This took place during their lunch period. And it was just amazing to see the amount of support of fellow peers. As people were eating, the students were able to receive their medals and receive, you know, applauses and standing ovation. And it was amazing. So, you know, shout out to our leaders and our buildings for, you know, providing the space and the opportunity for our students. And I know that Helen had already told us about the Day of the Dead cultural awareness and celebration in Medina. But I wanted to highlight this because this is a very authentic cultural experience for our students. And I think it's, it's amazing that our staff and our students are able to leave Penfield and go out into surrounding communities to experience this type of celebration. And, you know, Day of Dead or Dia de los Muertos is a traditional Mexican holiday celebrated on November first and second where it honors the deceased loved ones. And as you see from the pictures, you know, they were able to not only have fellowship within the community, but they were also out at the restaurant and taking in those lovely dishes and yummy foods. So shout out to, you know, Ms. Lazio and her college Spanish one students. And before we go on to our next updates for human resources, I also wanted to say that we are looking forward to providing updates via our newsletter for equity and access, just like Dr. Maloney explained. She will have the newsletter going out next, and then I will be providing those updates as well for equity and access.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just the Empire State Games, is that for kids with developmental and physical disabilities or just one or the other?
Yes, both.
Wonderful. Thanks.
I just would like to be invited next time to the Day of the Dead celebration. Thank you. I have a college, a college kiddo. She's studying Spanish right now. And she would have loved to do that. So I'm glad it's being done. Yeah. That our, our students are getting out there into the world, so to speak, and having experiences with other members in different communities. It's really, really important. Yeah.
I also need to piggyback off that. Like I did Day of the Dead the other day in my classroom because my partner, from where she came from, they had a high population. And she's like, are you doing it? I'm like, no. And I'm like, I better do this. And I have one kiddo that actually celebrates it. And I didn't know. And I'm like, I wouldn't have known if I hadn't taken the time to just adjust my reading instruction for the day to just be more, what's the word I'm looking for? Include, not include. I don't know. Whatever. But if I hadn't adjusted my instruction for the day, I can't think of the word. But like, she was so excited to talk about what she had, what she did to celebrate it that it was like, you could just see her glow. And I was like, thank God I did that. Like, it was just really exciting to see because it's important for them. It's part of who they are. So, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Kenny, HR update.
Well, I feel like I have the best part of the night. I am so excited to introduce to the Penfield School Community, two of our newest directors are actually here with us tonight. So thank you so much for coming out. We would like to introduce to both the board as well as the community, Jamie Naples, who's here. You can stand up, Jamie. She is our Director for Specialized Services and Support. And Kumba Senko, if you wouldn't mind standing up as well, our Director of Cultural Response and Student Supports. Both are going to be pivotal roles and new roles as we continue to focus on integrating the cultural response of sustaining education framework into our programming. And we're just ecstatic to have you. We are looking forward to partnering with you and we just know you're going to do great things for our kids. So thank you so much and congratulations and welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you so much for being here this evening. We're going to talk just briefly about our building emergency response plans. And just to kind of give the board and community some information, that this is an annual process. So every district in New York State is required to submit updated district and building-specific emergency response plans annually. So the Board of Education must approve these plans as part of the regular business meetings. So the Board of Education approved the district emergency response plan on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The building-specific emergency response plans are updated in partnership with our building principals and our school-based teams, as well as our partners with local law enforcement. The building emergency response plans were submitted to New York State Education Department Business Portal before the deadline of October first, two thousand twenty-four. The building emergency response teams and staff directories have been updated. Building emergency response plans have been submitted to NICID, again, per the requirements. So that certification is done by the superintendent in preparation of that date and timeline. We have also provided copies to our local law enforcement. That includes Monroe County Sheriff's Office and the Brighton Police. And the fire, final requirement again is for the adoption of the building emergency response plans. And now that we've finished with that update, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Driffl for a business update.
Thanks, Dr. Potter. Good evening, board. Couple of things that are on your agenda that require approval this evening. The first of which are capital project change orders. Most of the items on tonight's docket are actually all credits back, things that we just changed our mind on or we said, no, thank you. Some, some big credits back. On those associated change orders tonight, we have six tax surcharge settlements. So if you recall, tax surcharge, surcharge settlements are these large commercial properties that assess, excuse me, challenge their assessments with the town and the school districts, the two taxing jurisdictions. Sometimes those claims can be open for many years. We currently have about fifteen open claims, including these, these six that have proposed settlements. Three of the settlements tonight have proposed refunds. The other three have waived the refunds. Once these six are settled, they can't file another petition for another three years. So after this, we still will have nine. The question came up that does this adversely affect our budget? Is there any programmatic challenges because of these settlements? And the answer is no. We have a reserve fund set up specifically for tax cert liability in those claims. So these costs come right out of the reserve. It doesn't touch the general fund budget at all. So the next steps would be, the town has already approved these. We would approve them. And now they would go to the judge who would rule on the cases. And then we would issue the refunds and be done with these six, but still have nine more on the books. We'll talk a little bit more about the tax cert reserve fund and our other reserve funds that are meeting in December when we approve the two thousand twenty-four annual reserve plan. We need to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development calendar. I know we're still in the two thousand twenty-four year, but we're starting to look ahead to the budget development for next season. I'll review that more in a moment. And then the Board of Education also needs to approve the Health and Safety Committee Charter, just like we approved the Audit Committee Charter at our last meeting. So the budget roadmap for development for twenty-five, twenty-six, so tonight we're going to approve the calendar. At our next meeting, we'll fully review the budget goals, guidelines, and factors and review that reserve fund plan. So that's the meeting where we kind of review the high-level macroeconomic issues facing the district around healthcare costs, workers' compensation costs, the employer contribution rates for the different pension systems, some of those big cost factors that we know, that we know now. After we turn the calendar to twenty-five, January fourteenth, we'll approve the budget, GGF, as we call it, and we'll provide any pertinent budget updates. We probably won't have the governor's state aid information at that point. It's probably a little bit later in, in January. But when we get to that February eleventh meeting, we'll definitely be able to fully review revenue and expenditure drafts. And we'll also bring our Director of Transportation, Mr. Mike Gala, to that meeting to present on his department's budget. On March fourth, we'll have further budget updates and we'll invite Mr. George English, our Director of Facilities, to present his department's budget to the Board of Education and Community. On March eighteenth, we'll have further budget updates and refinements, updates as it, you know, relates to developments in Albany. And at that meeting, we also need to formally identify any ballot propositions that will be on the May, May vote and approve the budget notice. This year, we are looking to purchase buses again. So that'll definitely be a ballot proposition that we put forward to the community in May. But we'll talk much more about that. April twenty-second, the Board of Education formally adopts the superintendent's proposed budget. On May seventh, we'll hold our annual budget hearing. And this year, the statewide budget vote and board election is on Tuesday, May twentieth. So that is the path ahead for the next six months. Lots of conversations about budget ahead. We'll get through it together. I welcome any discussion.
Board members' questions or comments? We just look forward to the coming months.
I know, I know you do.
We do, we do. Thank you, Dan.
So that concludes the superintendent's updates.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on six A, building, building emergency response plans approval. Can I please have a motion in a second that the building emergency response plan amendments described above be approved?
Second.
That was Nicole. I don't know if you heard her and Krista. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? So this is the Penfield Skyline Resolution. Can I please have a motion in a second that the resolution be approved?
So moved.
Second.
You have your options, Kristen or Nicole. Oh, it was Krista. Oh, that's why you did second. Okay. Then you don't have those options. All right. So the Penfield TK owner, can I please have a motion in a second that that resolution be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Penfield Place, can I please have a motion in a second that that resolution be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Ellison Apartments, can I please have a motion in a second that that be approved?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the resolution for new Monroe Real Estate be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And the Penfield Hotel LP, can I please have a motion in a second that that be approved?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Lynn, did we vote on the Penfield Skyline?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I gave options. I wanted to make sure. I thought I skipped that. All right. Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget development calendar as presented?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And can I please have a motion in a second that the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter is approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? So we have Monroe County School Board Committee meetings. Who? We didn't have any? Oh, yeah, there's none on there. Convention shouldn't be on there. All right. So the NISBA convention?
Yeah, I'll go first. I had the opportunity, opportunity to attend. It was in New York City and it was, I always like to go because not only do you get to meet other board members from districts all throughout New York, the state of New York, but they hold these, they offer these great talks and seminars about various topics pertaining to, to the board and to school districts. And I went to a few interesting ones. There was board governance, onboarding of new board members. There was one with having a dogs, therapy dogs in the schools and what that all involves. And there were a few others. I forget right now. But just, I was able to, and so what we did is that we kind of, most of us went to separate ones. And then we would meet afterwards and have conversations about what we learned and what we would like to bring back to our fellow board members and to our superintendent and senior cabinet. And it's just, it was just very interesting. And, you know, it's a good experience and I recommend all board members at least do one. You know, it's, it definitely, it's, it's time because the ones, apparently, these conventions in New York City, usually they have, have them like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So it's the weekend and it's easier to manage with schedules. However, I guess because New York City is special.
It is.
Yeah, right? Don't get me started. That this one happens Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. So it's not that easy, especially folks who work full-time and have commitments. And we, my family had to do some juggling where my husband, you know, rearranged his schedule so he could be home with our family. So I was able to go do this. And it's just a really good experience and I recommend everybody goes.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question about the onboarding one? Did you, like, you have lots of information to share?
I did bring back information.
Yeah.
And it's just interesting how, I, I think it's really important for our community to understand and remember how a school board operates. And that not only is this a voluntary position and that we give up a lot of our own time and effort and our family time, but we are definitely committed to the students in our district and what we do on their behalf. And there was somebody in the audience, it was a Saratoga Springs School District that presented and how they developed a manual for new board members that they can go back to. And my favorite part of that manual that they offered was the acronyms. They just had a list of all the acronyms and what they meant. And I was like, that is absolutely brilliant because as we know in education, the acronyms are far and wide and you like tend to forget. Also, there was a, an audience member, another board member from, I forget what district she was from. But her question to them, to the. she was from, but her question to them, to the panel was, how do we manage a Board member who does not want to do the work? Who does not want to show up to the meetings? Who does not participate, always has an excuse? And their suggestion was you just procedure everything out of them. You know, just like, this is the procedure, this is the expectation. If you're not, if you can't do these things, well, then you need to leave. You know, so it's just, I really would like our community to understand, have a really important and clear, just have a very clear understanding of how a school board works and what we are responsible for and what we are not responsible for. And for potential Board members who would like to serve on this Board, that they have just clear, just completely transparent of expectations and what needs to happen in order for them, the trainings that are involved, the meetings outside of Board meetings and workshops, and, you know, the commitments that need to be made. Yeah. So that, having said that, my favorite one was the dog therapy one, because we got to talk about dogs. And I went there and I had Dan Driffl in my mind about, you know, the liability of having, you know, and the cost, the cost it would to the district, right? So we can't just, oh, it's a therapy dog. No. Not only does the dog have to be certified and have its papers and all the things, but the trainer has to be certified and have all the things. And that trainer has to have insurance under their own home insurance for that dog. So it's like all of these things. And the difference, a lot of people didn't know the difference between a service dog, a therapy dog, and an emotional support animal. And a district has absolutely no commitment to a therapy dog or an emotional support animal. A service dog, yes, without a doubt. You cannot say no to that, but the other two, we can definitely say no to. And just the amount of liability that is, that we hold as a district and the potential harm, yeah. Having said that, if you are sad or mad or anything that you're feeling, get a dog. Okay? Just get a dog. Yeah.
Or rested.
They cure everything.
Including restedness.
Right. Sorry. Your turn.
No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, yeah. My, I didn't trust my brain to say it all, so I took notes, which I'm not gonna.
Good for you.
Just, yeah.
I left my notes home.
Oh, okay, so you did too. Yes, this was wonderful, being in New York City as opposed to Buffalo, you know, no offense to anybody who might be from that area, but New York City's my jam, so. Let's see. I attended a lot, and I'll just give a few highlights. One was harnessing the power of a positive Board-Superintendent relationship, how important that is. One quote said, "Effective school boards lead as a united team with the superintendent each from their respective roles with strong collaborative, collaboration and mutual trust." So I thought that was great. And then they gave something called a dignity index, which they go through at their Board meetings, or maybe just in the summertime at the workshops, where they just sort of remind each other to give each other dignity, that like, it was color-coded, but like, the red ones were the bad ones, but like mocks or attacks a fellow Board member's background or beliefs. So that's on one end of the spectrum, and then the other one believes everyone has inherent worth and therefore treats everybody with dignity, no matter what. So just those reminders about to give each other dignity on the Board. Another one, actually, Mike Anisso, is that also a culture of care. I didn't learn a ton at that one because it was stuff that we already had, our TIG and multi tiers system of support.
Good job.
Acronym. But one thing that I noted was, because I was like, okay, this is, this has been my, one of my sort of mantras or whatever for a while, they talked about a new, one of their elementary buildings, which was redone or something, and when you walk into the building on, you know, big marble entryway, right on the floor is a globe. And the gentleman who was presenting from that district is Puerto Rican, and when he walked in and saw it, he's like, Puerto Rico's missing. The rest of the Caribbean was there, but, so they got down and chiseled out Puerto Rico. But it just reminded me of something that I've, you know, would still love to see, you know, at some point, which is those flags representing the flags of the world, because, you know, the kids, as soon as they walk in, there's this huge globe.
They see themselves.
They see themselves, yeah. So I don't think we could have the money for marble floors for a globe, but the flags.
I know a guy.
Shane Wiegand and Keisha James did one on culturally responsive education, and that was jam-packed. One of the things they showed was slides that they show kids, and one of the slides was just an old picture of a man on a throne, gold, you know, gold throne and lots of riches and wealth. And it was such an old picture, you couldn't tell, you know, the color of the man, and they would ask the kids, you know, where do you think this king lived? And they would all say different things, and it turned out that it was Matamosa, you know, from, in Africa, the Mali Empire. So just helping these kids to know what Africa was pre-colonization. And I wrote another great quote, they said, "Making all cultures matter, our students' cultures can be positioned as strengths and as the foundation of empowering rigorous and innovative learning." But I just love that, making all cultures matter. There was a conducting fair and unbiased super evaluations. That's something that I would love to share with you both closer to the time, but just the importance of those evaluations being evidence-based to eliminate bias, so evidence, actual observations and specific measurements as opposed to, you know, bias or interpretation. And then, and then lastly, the teacher shortage, I went to one about that, and he said that half of all schools within the US have unfilled vacancies. Rural schools are the hardest hit. Fifty percent of rural schools lack special education. Or not completely lack special education, but sufficient special education. There's been a 50% decline in enrollment in teacher programs since 2009. And interestingly, 85% of New York teachers accept their first position 40 miles from where they grew up. So that's a, interesting to think about recruiting from home, because, you know. I'd love to get these slides to you, Steve, if you're interested, but they were some really good things. And then lastly, oh, second to last, the importance of exit interviews. And in terms of retention, the assumption was that salaries and benefits would be the first thing, the most important thing to teachers, but that was actually the second most important thing to teachers. The first important thing was a relationship with colleagues. So relationship with colleagues, salaries and benefits, relationship with supervisor were the first, second, and third reasons why they either stayed or left. So that was, there was so much, I mean, I just cotton, cut and copied from about 50 slides that they gave, so.
Well, what's great is that when you sign up, when you register for this convention, there's an app that they give you access to, and you can go through each day and decide which seminar, which talk you're showing up to. And they give you a little rundown, and then sometimes the presenters have provided slides so that you can preview what they're going to present on. And just a couple of things, I was, I always liked to go to a student-led presentation, and because I know we have sources of strength here at our high school, I went to a presentation on sources of strength by students, and they did a great job. They were super nervous, but, you know, they kind of shook it off, and they did a really marvelous job of getting, I was interacting with a woman I had never met before, but, you know, we were looking each other in the eyes, and we were talking about things, and, you know, it was, it was a great way to encourage our students to let their guard down and put a little trust in a stranger, which I know is really difficult to do, because you just never know where your sharing is going to end up, right? But you have to put that trust out there sometimes. So that was always engaging. I really appreciate the student-led talks. And then Nicole and I went to the keynote, the keynote address, and it was an AI robot called Sophia. And she was on the stage. First, we had students sing. It was marvelous. And then Sophia was introduced and interviewed by the president of NISBA. Is that, he's the president? Yeah. And he sat down and she stood up, and he would just ask her all these questions just off the cuff, and it was intriguing and also a little creepy, just seeing this robot talking.
Who looked totally human.
Who looked totally human, except for her transparent head, where you can see all the lights. So, yeah. And also, there were a lot of talks on AI in schools and how to engage with that. Yeah. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks for going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All good except the delayed flight out of JFK for six hours.
Yeah. She brought homework. I played Candy Crush.
All right, so I think the last thing is, I'll open up a conversation about our vacant Board seat. We wanted to kind of have a conversation at the Board meeting so that you guys could hear our thoughts about what we would like to do with that position. We know that a large part of the community had concerns about Board conversations, private conversations, so we wanted to kind of open this up so you guys could get a feel for or hear what our conversations or our thoughts are. Okay, so just to kind of bring back to memory, we have three options when it comes to filling that Board seat. We could appoint someone, we could have a vote for someone, or we could keep that position or that seat open. So I'll open it up to you guys, like, what are your thoughts? And then I'll, I can share mine last.
I have a perspective on this, being somebody who's a new Board member and recognizing all of the work that comes along with this and some of the revelations that you discover once you're sitting in this seat. It seems to me that taking somebody at this point without having the opportunity to attend the Monroe County workshops that are required within the first year, and those workshops are already done, so having somebody placed in the position right now and not having the benefit of the workshops, to me, is a disservice to them and to us working with them. I received a lot of benefit from the workshops, but I also, even with the workshops, keep discovering where my role is and where my role isn't. And so to me, there's, there are a few months ahead of us, but to me, after hearing from the community, and the community is great about sending you emails and saying, "We think you should do this," and then another whole group of people say, "We think you should do this," and then another whole group of people say, "We think you should do this." We got a lot of feedback from the community on all of our options. And so just living this as a new Board member, I think it would be a disservice to try to place somebody in this position, and I think we should hold the seat open until the May vote.
Completely agree. I mean, I had the same thought, just the amount of training that we get from the county and from the President and Vice President and the summer workshops. I, I don't think it's possible to catch somebody up to where they would need to be to fill that seat now. And I don't, and the second option being to hold an election in 90 days, that's really expensive and a lot of work. So to me, just wait until May, even though, yeah, even though it means we have to show up to these meetings more to have a quorum, but we're all pretty much here anyway. So I just, I just don't think that there, it's possible to, I don't think anybody has the time or bandwidth or ability even to catch somebody up. Yeah, those are my thoughts.
I'm just going to agree. I don't think it's fiscally responsible to hold an election right now when we have one coming up in May. Also, there's a lot that has been missed, and not only is it a disservice to the potential new Board member and fellow Board members, but it is a disservice to the community, because the community needs an opportunity to vote again on who they want. And that takes time, and I think we need that time. So I'm more than happy to leave it vacant until May.
Yeah, I'll just echo the same thing. I know my first year on, we had someone that had to step down because of a move and for the same reasons. The Board at the time decided to do that. Really, my biggest thought, bringing in a brand-new Board member like Patrick, was the training was just so valuable, and it's almost not even enough. Like, I feel like even third, fourth year in, I'm still learning a lot, and I, there's just so much to learn and to try to catch someone up, so to speak, like, it's a lot. And I just don't know, time-wise, I think we're all stretched really thin as it is, and I just think we have to find a way to fill the Meg's liaison positions, like, we'll have to divide that up amongst us the best of our abilities for what we're able to attend. But I just think the trainings, that was my biggest thing. It's just those two trainings are so huge, even those, like, the summer workshops were huge. Your mentoring with your mentor, your onboarding with your VP and your president, there's just so much to learn. And just as a new Board member, for those that don't know, you typically meet with all of senior cabinet and learn about their roles so that you understand all the really ins and outs. And again, like Patrick said, like, there's just so much that you don't even know that is your role or isn't your role. Like, being someone that's been in the world of education my whole entire professional career, like, I learned a lot being on the other side, so I just, there's a lot, more than you realize.
Not to mention the, what is it, six-hour fiscal training, oh so, oh so interesting.
Yeah. And overwhelming.
And overwhelming.
It's very overwhelming.
It is a lot of, it is a lot to learn, especially being new, right? So we had the opportunity of, you know, asking someone that was with previous experience, but I think it's, you know, honestly, best to leave the seat open, you know, and like you said, have the community vote, right? And, and having the community vote in 90 days, and then they would just be voting again in what?
Two months.
Two months after, and that, this position is only for the remainder of this year. So the seat would be open for next year anyways, so that person would only be filling in the seat potentially, yeah, for four months. It just doesn't, it's not fiscally responsible, you know, to do that in 30 or 90 days and then still you're doing it again. So I, I would agree that, I think it's, it's something that, you know, we have a history with, it's been done in the past. And, you know, there are enough Board members that will be available and are willing to serve in place of, so I think that's important.
and are willing to serve in place of. So I think that's important to note when we think about those things. Yeah, did you want to share?
Yeah, I was just wondering, in the case that the board would decide to appoint someone qualified, would you maybe have someone in mind that would be ready and willing to do it? Or would that be sort of a struggle to find someone to fill that position?
Honestly, I think it might be a struggle because I think anyone who has been on the board, especially if they've been on the board for a number of years, once you kind of take a break, you're far removed from it, right? Yeah, you get your life back and that's, it's a lot of time to give, right? So you have to be in that mind frame or mindset of being willing to do that again. So it's a lot.
Yeah.
And not that it's, you know, it's not enjoyable, it's not rewarding. But it is a huge time commitment, you know, away from family. And so it's something that everyone thinks of.
Yeah, I think when you're in it, you're in it.
Yeah.
And you're, it's kind of like, I don't know, I think like being a brand-new mom with little babies, like, you're just used to not sleeping through the night. But once you get out of that phase, you're like, oh, this is what this feels like to sleep eight straight hours. This is beautiful. So I almost think like, when you take a step down, you're like, oh, I just got ten hours of my life back. Well, sometimes more in a week, like, because you are putting in, I don't know, this week we'll have
A lot.
A lot. I mean, tonight alone is over three hours, just tonight. So then you have the prep that you did for the board meeting, which is, takes at least an hour typically. And then everything else that you still have, you know, a lot of us still have meetings happening the rest of the week.
EK meetings during the week.
Yeah. So, I think once you take a step back, it's kind of like, it's hard, this is different. So I think it's asking a lot. Yeah.
Alright, well, I just wanted to kind of open that up just because I think it's important for us to even voice our opinions to each other in this format. And to be transparent. Yeah. So thank you for your thoughts on that. And are there any other, any unfinished business or new business, I mean? Because we just did unfinished business.
I think so, I think that's it.
Alright. If my computer will go to this last. Should, I could have done this on, off the top of my head. Can I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:33 PM?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?